We're gonna bring this meeting to order. At this time, I'm gonna ask the, "Coke or Green," if you would, if you could. Fred.
Mayor Ed, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We ask that you be with us as we go forward tonight and in the days ahead. Give us guidance, guide us to live our lives the way you would see fit, Lord. We ask that you would give wisdom and reassurance to our elected officials and public servants. Look after the men and women in the military and public safety. Be with us, guide us, in your name we pray. Amen.
While we're standing, please. Uh, Dr. Duke, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Make me see you. All right, that brings us down to item number four on the amendments to the agenda. We have three, four. We have four amendments to the agenda. You're showing three on your, on your minutes, sorry, no, on your minutes, on your agenda for tonight. One of them is, A, we need to add item B under consent agenda. We signed a proclamation, "Keep Pickens Beautiful." Or, "Keep Pickens Beautiful." Item B, uh, with Mr. Jackie Dunn and Ms. Lori Fullwood, uh, the light presentation for downtown. Come on in, gentlemen. Hey, Mayor? Good to see you. And C, uh, the annual redoption of official land use intensity map. Uh, our planning department officer will give us on that one. And also, we gotta, wanna discuss the lease with the Board of Education. Just leave it like that, you don't want to explain it, of course. With the, with the lease of the Board of Education, that's a new addition that just got brought forth. So with all that being said, um, that would be under, that would be F. Yeah. That would be F. All right? All that being said, um, y'all have any questions before we go forward? If you don't have any questions, I need to move a second to approve the agenda.
Sure.
Have a moving second before a discussion. None being all in favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. The agenda has been approved. Item number six is normally, is the employee recognition, and this is Ms. Denny's, uh, part of the program, and we've been letting her run with that for the last few years, and she's done such a good job with it. Ms. Denny, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We have one, and it's a big one. We really appreciate our long-term employees, so Mr. Curtis Clark. He has been with the fire department for 10 years. So congratulations. We're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Curtis. Now, that's gonna bring us under item number seven, under consent agenda. We signed a Rotary Heart proclamation this month. And, let me get to it. Rotary has Heart proclamation, whereas Rotary International founded February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, and the world's first, one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas they are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised, comprised of professional business and community leaders in over 34,823 clubs in 206 countries and geographical areas. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian, oh, I'm having trouble with words tonight, humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas local clubs are encouraged to participate in a community service project centered around feeding the hungry and helping to alleviate, alleviate world hunger. And whereas Rotary is committed to adopting projects to help do good in the world. And the Rotary Club of Jasper is one of the approximately 1,600 clubs throughout the eight states and the District of Columbia in the United States and 20 countries of the Caribbean with more than 67,500 members. Sponsoring a project on or around Valentine's Day, 2018, to satisfy a need in the community, thus doing good in the world. And therefore, I, Robert Jones, as well as Ms. Becky Denny, Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner of Pickens County, Georgia, to hereby proclaim February 14th, 2018, that Rotary Heart, Rotary has Heart Day in Pickens County, and encourages all citizens to join me and Rotary International and the Rotary Club of Jasper, making sure this project is given proper recognition. Mr. Barnes did not get to sign that because he wasn't available at the time, so I'm sorry. We didn't mean to leave you out on that. All right, that brings us down to item B. Uh, we signed a proclamation, "Keep, Keep Pickens Beautiful" proclamation. And if I may, uh, to designate April 20th, let me start again. To designate April, 2018, as the Great American Cleanup, "Keep Georgia Beautiful," Green starts here statewide cleanup month. Whereas Jasper and Pickens County are rich in beauty and natural resources. And whereas every citizen can contribute to the protection and preservation of the beauty of Jasper and Pickens County by participating in litter cleanup campaign and, like a red ribbon, we're kidding, bro. Whereas, "Keep Pickens Beautiful" will assist in organizing citizens, civic clubs, churches, schools, in a countywide effort to improve our community. And whereas Jasper and Pickens County citizens realize a clean effort is needed to display pride in our community, for ourselves, our visitors, and for industrial prospects. And whereas April is "Keep America Beautiful" Month, April 2018 is designated as Adopt a Road Cleanup Month. And now therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as the official cleanup month in Jasper, Nelson, Talking Rock, and Pickens County. Our projects will be identified as "Keep Pickens Beautiful," "The Great American Cleanup." We invite all citizens to join in actions which will further enhance the beauty of Jasper, Nelson, Talking Rock, Hen, and Pickens County, and encourage all citizens toward together to sustain these efforts throughout the year. Signed by Robert, Robert P. Jones, Pickens County Commissioner, John Weaver, Mayor of Jasper. Johnny, thank you for being here this evening. All right, brings us down to old business. Item number eight, under old business, Pickens County and City of Jasper Economic Development Council. Uh, that is something that has been looming out here, that we wanna hopefully come to, come to some sort of solution to the Economic Development Council of Pickens County and the City of Jasper. Well, do you want, have anything to say on that?
I do.
Please, Ms. Denny.
Thank you. Appreciate that. After studying this issue, which I had announced I would do at the last meeting, and I discussed it with several others, um, actually, it's pretty simple. The Chamber of Commerce, several months ago, was struggling financially. And at that time, Jerry Nekvital, glad you're with us, agreed to take on both roles of Chamber Executive Director in addition to Economic Director. The Chamber is now back on its feet and doing well. Thank you, Amber and Jerry. But we, we also, we would like to thank Jerry for helping us through this time. We would also like to thank the City and County Economic Advisory Council. We now feel that we need a full-time person in each of these roles. And, sir, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to continue funding by the county with the stipulation that the money be put in an escrow account for future use of economic development services. And that would be effective April 1st. Then we will, we would begin a six-month search to fill the role of that position. During this time, our county attorney would work on rewriting the bylaws of the Joint City-County Council to bring it up to date.
See if you have any questions on that.
Can you say, "Put in an escrow account"? Currently, you're distributing that money to the Chamber of Commerce, so is this what the understanding of the Chamber would hold that money in escrow pending the selection of, of whoever's to fill that position?
That could be a possibility. Or if I may interject something to that, uh, the money in escrow would, I would support the money in escrow, but also want the people of Pickens County and City of Jasper to know that we're still for economic development, and we still wanna invest this money in economic development as we go forward. Now, there's still some items to work out, such as, uh, this money will probably, we haven't decided yet, or I haven't decided yet, hadn't thought as much forward to the fact that Pickens County wanna take that money back and issue checks from Pickens County, or put it in escrow account right now. I guess for the sake of trying to figure out the details, we'll just leave the money in an escrow account and let the money still go to the, to the Chamber in an escrow account that's not to be spent. Ms. Harvey, you got any questions on that? Mr. Barnes, what do you, what's your? Well, I've got a, I've got a move. Ms. Denny has made a move. I knew that. Uh, may I get a second? Second. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. All right. And that will go into effect again on April 1st. All right, that brings us under item number nine, under new business, uh, fiscal year 19 accountable court grants and the renewals.
Yes, sir.
Angela, please.
This is, um, the four accountability court grants, um, drug court, mental health, family treatment, and veterans court. It's a total of $1.3 million. These are renewals each year. No new contributions from the county.
Right. You need a move a second to hopefully give me the authority to sign those at, at March?
Yes, sir. We'll submit on Monday.
Okay. What, pardon?
We'll submit them electronically on Monday.
Okay. I need a move a second. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. All right. And that will go into effect again on April 1st. All right, that brings us under item number nine, under new business, uh, fiscal year 19 accountable court grants and the renewals.
Yes, sir.
Angela, please.
This is, um, the four accountability court grants, um, drug court, mental health, family treatment, and veterans court. It's a total of $1.3 million. These are renewals each year. No new contributions from the county.
Right. You need a move a second to hopefully give me the authority to sign those at, at March?
Yes, sir. We'll submit on Monday.
Okay. What, pardon?
We'll submit them electronically on Monday.
Okay. I need a move a second. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. Ms. Angela, introduce yourself and what your position is. Some people don't know who you are and what your, actually what your position is, not only with the county, but the court system.
Um, I'm Angela Norris. I'm the grants manager. Um, I was hired in December of 16, um, with Judge Weaver up in Superior Court. Um, in March of 17, um, my position was moved to the Finance Department, so I've been down here for the last year. Um, I manage, um, all of the finances, um, accounts receivables, payables, and grants associated with the four accountability court programs, the Pickens County Visitation Center. Um, I have a vocal grant through the District Attorney's Office. I have, um, the Family Law Information Center, and court, court, and special advocates, and the Programming Departments from all three counties.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. Then that brings us down to item B, under new business, uh, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Fullwood. I'm gonna turn it over to y'all.
First of all, I wanna thank everybody, Robert and Jerry, and thank you for letting us come before you tonight. One thing that, uh, as you well know, last year, we were trying to get ready for, um, I'm gonna turn it here, just to make sure if anybody can see it. Um, I wanted to make sure that we didn't forget what we, um, were trying to do last year, and that is try to get the city ready for Christmas and the lights and so on, some other things. Just to let the people know that, of the county, that the city, uh, the business owners are gonna get together and put lights on top of the building. That is gonna happen sometime this summer. Uh, one thing that happened, we had the money arranged last year, however, when I talked to Lori, and she'll go into detail here in just a minute, we waited too long to get it done. It was cold. It wasn't gonna stick, stick on top of the roof. There was moisture in the air. So we just decided to wait. I went and met with Lori Fullwood, who's with Universal Concepts in Compton, Georgia, and, um, I met with her on several occasions. She does everybody up and down the road. She does Lakeland near. She does Six Flags. You just, you about name it, she does it. But anyway, went before her and asked her, uh, what we, uh, what we were trying to do. She came over. We rode up and down through the city, as well as the county, and we came up with a concept. And what we have before you, and Lori's gonna come before you in just a minute and go into detail what we're talking about. But we want a three-year project. And know how much money you're gonna spend each year, what you can do, the lighting and sound, and she don't have anything to do with sound, but what I meant to say was banners and other things. So at this point in time, I'm gonna let Lori Fullwood from Universal Concepts talk about what their plan is.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for having me. Like Mr. Dunn said, I represent a, a company just down the road from me and coming, with a 35-year-old family-owned business. You guys have probably seen our work around you, from LAJ to TAE, down to, to, uh, Georgia World Congress Center. We are actually nationwide, but, um, we, um, we wanna take care of the people that are in our backyard, which is, which is you guys. And I was, uh, really excited when he contacted me and asked me to come up and take a look at your city and see how we can light it up and get everybody excited about Christmas and other holidays. And, um, and that's it. So I, I created a little storyboard. I'm gonna get, hand you out some pamphlets.
Please.
Kinda tells you a little bit about the company and the catalog and what we've proposed so far, so. I'm just saying.
Oh, I had one left under some, excuse me.
Um, a big tree is always just a, a great place to start. It just is, this could, can be your focal point. It just makes everybody gather around, and, um, we just, you know, we drove around, I, I found a perfect spot for it, um, there in support.
Yes.
Um, hope you guys can see this. This is a, what we call a commercial-grade, um, panel Christmas tree. It's all pre-lit with all of your commercial-grade LED lighting. Um, to sit right there in front on the pavement stones, um, just felt like it'd fit very nicely there. That's an 18-foot tree with a 4-foot star and a 20, a 24-inch riser, just to kinda give it some more style and some more design. So that's just a great place to start if you wanna, say, year one, um, and that, you know, perhaps that could fit into your budget. We talked about a whole lot of things as we were driving around, and I kinda just tried to focus on what I thought maybe your priorities could be, just to kinda fill up the area again, and just get everybody really excited about Christmas. Here are some illustrations, um, which shows you what peripheral lighting, and that's what we call it, lighting the top roof edges of your building. So here's some peripheral lighting, and, uh, down here is some peripheral lighting along Main Street. That's really a pretty inexpensive way to light up your city and just get a lot of bang for your buck, round by 50 a foot. Um, we put it up where it's designed to stay up 365 days in a year, um, with the new LED bulbs, which are rated for 60,000 hours. You'd get a lot of use out of them. And it's all, um, you know, it's designed to be outdoors. We can do it in a nice, sun-warm, white color, so I think everybody, that's the most popular color out there. We, um, also went in, talked about some tree lighting, which we can talk about later. It's, you know, depending on what you guys would like to do, you know, on those big oak trees, or some of the trees going down Main Street. Another thing that we talked about is, I was asking, um, Mr. Dunn, is there a particular area that, that maybe a little gathering area where you would like to, um, have special events, have people come in, um, maybe have a little bit of retail there? And we found a little alleyway. Um, you guys probably recognize the exact street name right there, but we took, I kinda came up with a, what we call festive lighting or patio lights. We can come in with some custom poles and do some zigzag lighting there. Canopy of lights always, always draws everybody in. Um, it just is, just a big, big design element that will get everybody downtown. And of course, being downtown's gonna help your merchants, gonna, you know, just help the community all, all around.
The, the LED lighting, is it computer-generated? Can you change the colors as it goes, or is this one standard color?
I did not go, go this, that step this time, because, um, I just felt like, you know, it maybe is a little bit early. It's a very expensive program. But yes, I can, I can.
Well, we got the city gear, I'm sure they'll be.
I do have what we call the RGB lights, and, um, yes, and those are all, it's a computer chip within each bulb, and it's got a controller, and you just dial in your colors or your effects. So that can be done as well.
By the way, the, the alleyway that she's talking about is in between Winksology and Winks Supply Jewelry Stores. So, yeah, and some events in some of our meetings recently, um, we're trying to do some things on the first Saturday of each month. And so we're gonna get some activities going, and so this is a concept we'd like to do and promote this, and it looks like a great concept, and, uh, I wanna thank Lori for bringing this to our attention.
The, uh, well, I've got you here, though, the maintenance of the fixtures. Do you, do your company maintain the, the lights that they go out? I mean, we've got somebody to call if something happens.
We can. Um, you know, we, we can offer turnkey services.
And, um, I'm assuming, I can't speak for the other two, but I'm assuming if we go forward with this, we probably find out about the warranties, what's involved. Are you looking at, are you looking at putting a whole brand-new tree and going with that?
Uh, Robert, the reason I, uh, I told Lori that you said last year that you were gonna try to get a new tree, and so I wanted to bring something to it. And what I wanted to do with bringing that out there, is open the rest of the lights that we were gonna deal with. So that was a concept I'm thinking about, and, uh, y'all can get together and talk about the price and all that.
Our trees are a commercial-grade tree. They typically last 10 or more years. If you guys have been in metro Atlanta during the holiday season, you see all the big trees up on top of the hospitals, like at 285 perimeter, all the Northside Hospitals and World Star Hospitals, that's us. Some of the, that tree that's on Doctor's Hospital at 285 is 95 feet tall, and it's over 10 years old.
Who would, who would put the tree up, take it down? I mean, y'all do that, or?
We can. We can. Um, I just, um, finalized a contract with the City of Dawsonville. They're doing the same thing. We bought a new tree. We're gonna, uh, install it, take it down, and store it for you.
Oh, you doing some of the lighting, like you're talking about, on top of the buildings? Is Dawsonville doing that?
Um, Dawsonville, uh, yes. On the new city hall, I did three sides with garden.
I'm just curious, like, with our town, we have different individual owners. So Jeff, I'm sure you know the answer to this. How do we legally put something on an owner's building? Do we get written permission, or how does that work?
I'm sure your city attorney has some sort of building release liability that releases us if we have to get up there on the roof and gives permission for us to get up on the roof. On most of the cases, you know, the, the buildings along Main Street are about only one story. We, we can, we can get up there with a 40-foot ladder and walk on it outside. Some of those multi-story buildings, you know, if, if it's just impossible for us to get on the roof, we have to use a bucket truck.
Thank you to get into that. I know the mayor talked about this last year, there was a lot of issues. So when I last got with the, with the owners, uh, I told them that there was gonna be an issue with the city. They couldn't probably do that, so we were gonna have to get, um, a, uh, get with the owners and get some kind of document, which we get a attorney to write up, saying that we could be able to get on top of the building, but there would be no, uh, no liability whatsoever.
The price, the price you're showing here, I know these are preliminary prices, I'm assuming, but the price you're showing here, is that, is that an installed price?
It is not. Product only.
Product only, okay.
Uh, and Robert, you might tell some officials, their facility is, is a beautiful facility that you can walk back there, they have people back there working. They actually cut, you, they have wires and just, um, rows and rows of lights with doors and whatever. They cut it, they fix it to what's equal in the building, so it's not a light that's already pre-measured anymore. They cut it out and fix it, so, and that's what they do with everything.
And if you decide to go with an annual contract where it was full turnkey and we do the installation and take down, that would also cover, like, little minor repairs on your tree. So we'll bring your tree out, you know, off the shelves, October, start going through it and checking bulbs and plugs and stuff like that, and fix those things. And then, you know, then we schedule your date of when you, once your tree go up, and what's your light data, your special event, and, uh, your tree will be up and standing and operating at that date, hopefully.
All right. I have any other questions?
Also, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, that was just kind of the basic tree. You know, the tree can grow in heights if you wanted, if you want it to move, get bigger, or you wanna move it to one of, another, uh, location, and you want it to be larger, it can grow in 4-foot increments. And we can just overlay the RGB lighting system over your existing tree and create those 15, 20-minute, uh, segments where you play music and it has the different events, uh, effects going on the tree. So I was trying to kinda get the basics covered and take baby steps and let y'all kinda move into bigger and greater things. So the RGB systems, you know, you, you know, that takes some maintenance. You've gotta have someone around that knows what they're doing, knows how to work those controllers, and understands that data going through all those lines. So, um, it is, it's, uh, it, it deserves more conversation.
Y'all, any other questions right now?
There's gonna be more questions.
Sure.
We would probably like to get back in touch with you, Jackie. Stay in touch with us.
Sure.
Uh, we have our, our work sessions are on the, second Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning, uh, or 10, 10:30. But, uh, well, the big thing, Robert, and again, first of all, I wanna thank y'all for letting us have the opportunity, as well as the mayor and the city manager being here. You know, we don't wanna force this on y'all and not force it on, what I'm trying to say is, don't wanna wait till the last minute to do this thing. We wanna get this done, and y'all can look at everything. Go see the facility where she makes this stuff, and, and it's just outstanding, and I think y'all will really like what you're gonna see. But the thing is, I don't wanna wait till the last minute to do it, and we got plenty of time. We're gonna try to get on the lights on the buildings sometime in the summer, so we'll have it for Jeep Fest, October, uh, George Marlboro, and so on and so forth. So we've got a lot more things to do with this than, than just Christmas, but I want y'all to know that we're excited about the opportunity to do this.
And, you know, our company, we've earned a good reputation by just giving you a lot of personal service, and the fact that you guys are so close. Um, you know, I can have a crew up here to help with any problems that might come up, and, uh, and we just, you know, we hope we can just build a real long-lasting relationship with y'all.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it, and we will be in touch.
Rob, what was the cost of product only when you referred to?
Well, if you, uh, let me discuss that again. I have to work with, I have to work with the county clerk that she gets really ill and stay on, on schedule.
All right. Pardon? All right, ladies. Then that brings us down to item number 10, under Financial Court. Ms. Harvey, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the financials, please.
Thank you. Um, the report that you have in front of you is, um, the report for February. And that is, uh, it's like 2022, the spending budget should be 16.7% or less. Um, on the revenue side, through the end of February, we collected $2,028,718, and that's 7.76% of the total revenue budget. For, um, the general government functions, the expenditures are $390,393, and that's For judicial, expenditures are $406,501, and that's 11.82%. For public safety, the expenditures are $2,084,721, and that's 18.7%. For, um, the public works functions, the expenditure for $324,542, and that's 10.86% of their budgets. For the Health Department, uh, Senior Center and the MATS Services, the expenditures were $52,632, and that's 6.51%. For Culture and Recreation, $145,540, and that's 15.06%. For Housing and Development, um, the total. For housing and development, the total expenditures were $73,309, and that's 11.13%. Overall, general fund expenditures through February are $3,477,638, and that's 13.36%. So we are slightly over three, slightly over 3% under, under budgeted amount. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures so far are $153,146, and that's 7.38%. For the airport, expenditures are $63,173, and that is 14.34% of their budgets. The, for some of the revenues and the expenditures, the revenues that we received and expenditure we paid through February were prebacked to the school of 2017. Those approvals are all done now. And I also gave you a final for December 27th and final. That's all the approvals through the end of February. So that's basically our audit numbers. The lineup of budgets for February and also their budgets for the final 2017 were submitted to department heads on March the 9th. And I have copies of all those lineup and budgets if you'll, if y'all would like to look at them. Any questions?
Can remind us again when the, when the officer comes to start, please?
They will begin, they've already done testing. They did the testing the last week in February. They also did the agencies, the elected officials in the courthouse, the sheriff's office, and they started the tax commissioner's office. They will be here to do field work for our audit, March 26th, the last week in March. They'll be here the entire week. But everything's on schedule.
All right. Does Commissioner, any other questions from Ms. Harvey this time? Thank you, Ms. Fay. Good job. All right, that brings us down to item, item 11 under action items. A, approved minutes. Needed approval for the number one, the regular board meeting that we had on February the 15th, 2018. These minutes have been sent to you and I'm hoping to review them. I didn't see anything at this time, no, no struggle or anything at this time. So I'm going to ask for an approval of the minutes from the February 15th, 2018.
Sir, move.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being let known by favor. Boy, let be known by saying aye. Thank you. Those have been approved. Letting spring get here and stop me completely. All right, that brings us down to the item number two on the work session meeting we had on March 1st, 2018. Again, we reviewed these, didn't see anything out of the ordinary. I need a move in a second for those minutes. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, let them by saying aye. All right, that's going to bring us down to item number B under a rezon request. Mr. Osborne, do we have any rezon requests for this month?
Yes, sir.
Do you not have any? All right. Then that brings us down to item number C, Gimmer County Water Sewer Authority Agreement. We have got a proposal, a draft from the Gimmer County Water and Sewer Authority in regard to buying or selling water on Yukon Road when we finished the water line up Yukon Road. Gimmer Water Sewer hasn't started that project yet, but they are working towards the funding of that, where the two lines, the two canons can be, can be closed together and water can be distributed both ways. The, all that being said, I, you have read the, the contract? You have any, I'll discuss some issues I'll probably need to work out with their firm.
All right. The Gimmer County, what's holding up Gimmer is the fact that they need a signed agreement where they can get their loan established, where we're looking ahead on that. That being said, I'm thinking 30, 30 days or better is not going to make a whole lot of difference, and we've been working on this for a year. So I would like to, personally, I think, I think we'll table that for at least 30 days if y'all agree with me getting these contracts. So I have a move in a second to table it for the discussion. None being all that favor, let them by saying aye. Opposed, thank you.
All right, that brings us down to item number D, the George Department of Transportation, memo of understanding. Have you got, huh? Rodney, you got that memo?
Yes, sir. Basically, what it is, is a, an agreement with DOT when they replaced our signs on various county roads. One of them was Cove Road. We signed it originally of May of 2016. In the meantime, the city and the county has agreed to change the location of the city limit sign, excuse me, to the top of the S-curves there above the Cove. And so we're just needing to re-sign that memorandum of understanding that they now will maintain up to the top of the S-curves for that project and that will go from there out to Steve Tate Highway.
So you're, so they're requesting us to go ahead and?
Re-sign what we had signed, since we had moved the location of the city limits.
Okay. So I need an approval from, from you two to give me the authority to sign this contract All right, you have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, let them by saying aye. Rodney, does the city need the same, do they need to?
I believe Lonnie told me that they had, it had been brought up to a city council meeting about two weeks ago, a month ago, and that I believe they were expected to sign it.
Okay. All right, then that's going to bring us down to item E, under the annual re-adoption of the official land use map or intensity map of Pickens County. Richard, you want to speak on that for a second?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. What the state recommended best management practices is for the county about once a year to officially re-adopt its official zoning map. In Pickens County, it's called the official land use intensity map. What you see by the flag is adopted by the Board of Commissioners, March 2017, what's behind me. And then to y'all's left is three copies of the proposed map. When you look at the four, you'll probably note that they are very similar. And the good reason behind that is, as far as I know, the only changes are official rezonings that were approved by the Board of Commissioners and parcel splits. So this represents an effort of different county employees, different county departments, the private company TSC mapping, and it's really a cooperative effort that, that I appreciate everybody's time. So, you know, staff recommends approval and adoption.
All right. And that map is, in theory, good for one year. We've got to do the same thing about this time next year, I think, as zoning changes through the year. All right. I need a move in a second to approve that map, but that's.
Sure.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, let them by saying aye. Opposed, thank you. That brings us down to item F, the, the lease of the Board of Education in, I'm assuming the old high school property.
That's, that's where it is. The sheriff and the Board of Education worked out an agreement that they're going to lease the majority of that campus. They're going to, the district is going to locate Mount Ned or lease part of it to the charter system that runs Mount Ned School would be more accurate. And then the balance of the property leased to, to the sheriff's office, and they'll use it to house some of their, some of their colonels, says they, they need some more space. They're running out of room in jail. It's allowed them some more space for some of their current employees. But more importantly, it also allows for them to do, to do training year-round on school safety issues because they would like to have the school building there. And then the sheriff officer is in negotiations to, to relocate some of the regional training in our area, which will be a, a really nice thing if not developing lots as far as the local businesses and mountainous areas. And so they, they've worked out the terms that they find agreeable. My worry is, I don't think that the sheriff can actually own, own an interest in real estate in this official capacity. That's, that's the duty of the Board of Commissioners. And so what, what my request will be is that y'all are basically acting as a conduit for the sheriff to operate this building as a, as a training facility. And have authorization for the chairman to sign a very basic lease that allows that with the Board of Education board purposes of you allowing the sheriff's office to, to run the training facility there as well as their own offices.
Does that put us at any liability or any financial risk or any?
Liability-wise, it should. I mean, there's still some remaining to be there. You would only, you would be leasing this in your governmental function, approach your proprietary function. So there should be none, like no more so than any of your other, other buildings that you own. As far as expenses goes, the, the school system will be paying for the utilities because, as we said, they're, they have another school district that is the Mount Ned district that is going to be using some of it. We have a dollar-one leader there. The, and then the sheriff's office will be also for the, for the routine maintenance and then a keep of grounds in the buildings, which they presumably do through, through their workforce. They have a much cheaper workforce and it's a different process.
Would the county be leasing the entire area or would there be certain sections that would be?
Look, everything except for lower hall, is, is the way I understand it. Because the lower hall area would be used for the, for the Mount Ned, for that charge to the system. There would be a door, this would, the Board of Education will sell the, sell the door, which would be a barrier there. And then the cafeteria plus the kitchen would be used for the Mount Ned students as well. There may also be a, a joint use agreement to, 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 to Mount Ned.
So Mount Ned does have the gym, I mean?
Well, they, they would share the gym, basically. I mean, the, the sheriff's office would also be using the gym as well as a locker.
And the, in the band room?
The sheriff, the sheriff's office would use the bathroom. They will eventually use the, the hall door and, and as opposed outside buildings, but for now, while the school is relocating, they're going to allow the school to continue to use that, because they've got some more doors.
Is there any, is there any expense to the taxpayers as we go forward, or is it going to be an asset?
As far as the taxpayers go, I mean, it's, you pay in school taxes, you pay in more taxes that y'all levy, it's coming out of the same taxpayer. And it, it's going to reduce the cost of, of the maintenance. Even if the school does nothing with this building, they still have to spend the money just to maintain it. They can't let the ground, they can't let it look abandoned, and they're going to have to maintain the grounds. This is a way of doing it. There's, the school district cannot really, if, if they lease it to a private individual, then they lose the sovereign immunity protection because then they're engaging in a private function. And I'm a real sure that a school district, and if you do, you can, as the court commissioners, I don't know that, that this school can. If they tear the building down, it's, it's several hundred thousand dollars to do that. And where this building is not appropriate to use for students, it's a different equation when you're looking at adults and making a decision to use it. They're, and they're in a completely different box than, than the school board is as far as what, what they determine is acceptable for students. It is not. It will take a tremendous amount, it will take a great deal of money to, to get that building up to the standard or status that, that our district would require it to be. And it's just not feasible. And so that's one reason why the superintendent's reorganized the campuses in the way that you have to, to accomplish that. And that leaves this building vacant. And it seems like the, the, the school district has a wonderful relationship with the sheriff's office. They have done, far and above what's, what's called, and it's nowhere in their constitutional mandate that they provide security for the school system. And they have done it repeatedly, and there's never been, never been a complaint or anything. They have a wonderful working relationship. As far as the school district, what, what the, what the school district is applying with regard to utilities, the sheriff's office is more than making up for the services that they're providing. As for example, one of the things that everybody is an additional, SRO, so the, so the district will be able to have one at each campus. So it's, it's a, the sheriff's office is very good to the school district. And I think this is a, it's a really good situation for a public concern, including the taxpayers, including the downtown merchants. This, once that training facility is located here, I would argue that we will have the best training sheriff's office in, 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 so. I mean, he will have first, first access to any offering that goes on there. And then you also have the opportunity to bring in some of that fire and get there. So it's, it's, it could be a really, really nice thing. But all, your role would be that as a conduit and to allow, kind of like what you're doing at the airport, you're delegating it to another authority to do the day-to-day management of it. You would be delegating to the sheriff for the day-to-day management. It will be a five-year lease. And let's say that there's an entire, all three of y'all are gone, but next board commissioners would not be able to tell the sheriff that they couldn't use it and take over the county offices the way the lease would be.
If, if, when this lease is drafted, who's, it'll be an overall cost for the maintenance of the village per se, the heating and air, roof systems and all that?
Major, major things. I mean, if they find a sinkhole underneath it or something like that, I think then the sheriff and the school have to come back to the table and address it. The day-to-day things, the sheriff office deals with it. The things that they cannot do, what they call the school, and hopefully, and the school should have the resources to do. They have, you talk about heating and air. The school has probably more advanced heating and air people and their staff than, than what, what the sheriff has available for him. And that's what they've done this whole time. They have, they've really helped each other out when one of them's in trouble. This is, this is a very good relationship. So, so if y'all, if y'all, if y'all are agreeable about a motion to authorize the sheriff to execute that lease, so that we don't have to wait another 30 days to get it in motion.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? All that favor, let them, before you, I got one more. When this lease gets done, I, I do want to share that with my other two commissioners before I sign off on it. They're going to give me the authority to sign it, to be sure.
I'll stand in two, I'll play real name, it'll be very simple. It's not going to be one of those point-blank statements.
All right, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being let, let, let them say an aye? None opposed? Thank you. That has been approved. Thanks, Bill. That brings us down, and thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the explanation. That brings us down to item number 12 under guests, comments. At this time, does anyone have a comment? Or Bart?
Can I make a public service announcement? It's something you mentioned.
Yes.
It's with Key Pickens, beautiful. The Great American Cleanup is the month of April. On April 21st, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to noon, at the parking lot behind the old post office, we'll have a shredder there. And it's for businesses, personal stuff. You bring your banker's box, what, you know, the little box like that, it's $4 a box. They shred it right there on site. It's open to the public. We'll have ads in the paper coming up. But it's, you know, I know there's a few extra papers around here that if you need to get rid of them, you know, and you can't wait for your shredder to show up, please bring them on to April 21st.
When is the, well, I got to stand, when's the tire cleanup?
The whole month of April.
So how many tires can a family bring?
A family can take four tires. They have to be from your truck or car. They can't be big tractor tires, but off the rims. And you can take four in the entire month per, per family.
Okay.
And there'll be no charge. Normally, you get charged for that over on Camp Road. There'll be no charge for that during the month of April. But you have to check in, tell them how many tires you have. They'll take your name down just to make sure that.
Pickens County resident.
Yep. Pickens, you have to be a Pickens County resident to drop your tires on.
All right. Anybody have any other comments?
I've got a quick question, talking about the old high school down there. Is the DOT still planning on putting the turning line in in front of that facility?
That's supposed to start this month.
Okay.
But that shouldn't interfere. I'm hoping that going on with this project here, the traffic scenario that we're experiencing on, on the 8 o'clock morning should... on, on the eight o'clock morning should lighten up quite a bit if we're just gonna have Mount Ned and, and training facilities there. A lot of people can park around the back. That'll relieve a lot of that pressure we have there on Main Street coming in.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And that, what about the climbing apparatus that's in the back of the school, is that gonna go away?
No, you can use them anytime you want to.
He does, he does, I've seen him out there exercising.
Uh, I'm, I...
They haven't been serviced lately, I think.
Are you scared? Are you wanting?
No, I just lack room to be down in the hospital.
Any other comments or questions? Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank y'all for, for coming tonight, thanks for, for a pretty good crowd, and y'all have a good weekend, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.